All right. It is Tuesday, February 6th. It's the regular meeting of the Owentangie Local School District Board of Education. Coming to you from the Berlin Room of the Owentangie Administrative Offices. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Mr. Jenkins, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Dr. Dabberco?
Here.
Dr. Wallach?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Ms. Schreiber?
Here.
Can you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We don't have any amendments that I'm aware of to the agenda, any amendments. All right. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Subtle.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right. Mr. Jenkins.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes. All right. It's time for the Board President's Report. Over the past several weeks, obviously, we have a levy that's on the ballot. One of the things that the district has been doing to try to increase information and awareness of the facts behind the levies is go out and have a series of community conversations. These are a great opportunity. We're still having these at every school over the next couple of weeks, but they're a great opportunity for people to learn, you know, additional information about the ask and the reasons behind it. And it's also a really good opportunity for us to hear questions that the community has directly. One of the questions that I've heard at a few of these that I've gone to is what is the district actually doing to save people in the community money? Obviously, this is a district that has traditionally supported levies over time, has approved them, and we're very mindful of that community support and the need to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. We've been talking about this at a lot of the board meetings. I know Mr. Meyer, Mr. Jenkins have brought this up and will continue to do that, but I thought that I would use a little bit of time in each of the Board Presidents' Report to talk about some of these things as well. So, the question for tonight, and this will be relatively brief, but I just want to highlight this, is how is Owentangie a good steward of taxpayer dollars? I believe that we are a good tax steward in a lot of ways, but one of them is that we try to keep our costs incredibly low. So Owentangie Schools spends $13,735 per student based on the last CUP report that was issued by the state, which tracks all this information. That number, when you look at it without any context, is kind of tough to understand what it's talking about, right? So you have to look at it in comparison to other school districts. When you look at the 15 largest school districts in the state by population, and we have those enrollment numbers listed here, out of those 15, Owentangie has the third lowest spending per pupil. And when you look at our similar districts, which is a group that the state puts together for the purposes of this report, it's looking at, you know, wealth and types of, you know, community wealth, types of different school districts, we're third lowest among all of those as well. It's really striking, I think, when you look at these figures together, especially when you look at some of our peers locally here, like Dublin and Upper Arlington, that are spending, you know, close to $4,000 more per student. When you multiply that out based on the number of students we get here, we're in the millions and millions of dollars, close to $100 million if we're spending $4,000 more per student. So this is one of the ways that the district is trying to keep those costs low, and I think it really ties into what our board accountability is, to be, you know, to be really, have a watchful eye over those sorts of things. So I wanted to provide this information just as context, and this has been one way that the district is really trying to keep this low. Additionally, and this, we can go to the next slide, one of the questions that I've heard is, well, you know, how are you spending taxpayer money on the classroom versus administrators? People are always concerned about the administrative costs, and that's something that we track as well. Again, Owentangie spends, compared to its peers, a significant amount of money in the classroom, and it, we're one of the highest there among our comparable districts, and one of the lowest in administrative costs. So of all of the 606 districts that were listed on the CUP report, we have the 26th highest percentage of costs going directly to classroom instruction. Out of 606, that's a tremendous number. Compare that to the administrative costs, we have the 58th out of 606 lowest percentage of administrative costs. So those numbers are pretty far apart, as you can see that, and then we've listed here the other school districts that were from the prior slide that are comparable, similar Ohio districts. Again, you'll see we're the fourth highest in classroom instruction and the fourth lowest in administrative costs. Again, these are ways that I believe that the district is trying to model fiscal responsibility and direct the money that is coming into the district directly to that classroom instruction while keeping these costs low. We'll continue to talk about some of these things again. I know Mr. Meyer and Mr. Jenkins have pieces of this as well, but it remains a big focus area for us as the board on an ongoing basis, not just in the context of this levy, to make sure that we have good oversight, and we just wanted to share some of that information. With that, I don't believe that we have had any committees that have met over the past couple of weeks, so I believe we can go straight into the next agenda item, which is the high school math curriculum offerings. We're very excited to welcome a few folks from Owentangie High School.
Well, first of all, thank you for inviting us to come tonight to give you a little bit of a background about the pathways that we are currently doing in our high schools. Owentangie High School offers the Data Science Foundations and the Discrete Math Computer Science courses. We were the only school that went into the first year of the Data Science Foundations in the district. This is our third year to be in the Data Science Foundations. The second year, all of our other high schools joined us, and then last year, we also started the Discrete Math Computer Science with all four high schools participating. This is a really exciting time in math for us right now because we are able to offer pathways for kids that's not just algebra-based. They can discover how they can use math in other careers and how it's used in data science, for instance, how, what a better time to be in a Data Science Foundations course with Intel coming to Central Ohio. So it's allowing kids to be able to explore. We have kids from, the AP Calc kid is taking the Data Science Foundations along with the kid that doesn't want to take algebra because they don't like algebra-based things, but they're interested still in finding something that has with math, how to use their math. So we just appreciate you letting us be here, and I'm going to turn it over to both of the instructors. Amy Dieterly is teaching the Discrete Math, and Maureen Malinowski is teaching the Data Science Foundations, and they're going to give you a little bit of information about the class.
Hi! Sorry. I'm Amy Dieterly. I giggle. So what I have up here is I just thought it might be good for you guys to see a screenshot of some of the coding we're doing. I am not a coder, because when the kids say, "Will this work?", I say, "I don't know, hit run." Okay? And a lot of it is just learning about how the programs work, as well how you can use the math to actually solve it. Okay? So this one, we did, it was, we played Risk for a day, but not real Risk, because that takes too long. I played Junior Risk, okay? It has pirates and stuff. And then you flip the dice, and it was just being, what on average can you win, expected value, and you can see it over and over again, and so forth, and then just the coding. Okay? Now, I decided, I just, before I knew that we were going to come to you guys, I asked the kids, "What do you think of the class?". And I wrote it. One kid said, "It's fun." One said, "It's so different than any other math." Interestingly, one said, "Why we do the things we do." Okay? One said, "We have a real problem, we need to solve it." More of thinking of the numbers and how it works. One kid said, "Well, it's not like real math, because you just have to problem-solve and stuff." And it's just interesting for me in that regard. I'm like, "That is math. It's the thinking, it's the problem-solving." This picture is, we did a game called Half Checkerboard. They could change the colors, I just, I'm not that great with computers, I didn't know how to actually make it work from this picture, so I just screenshot it. Okay? But the actual code is working, and then I've been very involved with the state level. Last year, there were only seven teachers that were in the pilot, four of them Owentangie. And then all the guys asked for me for the stuff I tweak, because that's to be pretty. Okay.
Hi, I'm Maureen Malinowski. I have been teaching the Data Science Foundations course for three years. It is probably my favorite course to teach because it's fully collaborative. So in my classroom, my students work in collaborative groups every day, whether we're presenting new topics, whether they're working on labs or they're working on projects. Everything is based on them. They collect their own data, they look at data that is meaning to teenagers, and with that, they then create their own questions to research about that data. So it is a class that combines math, but it combined, mainly combines statistics, probability, computer science, and quantitative reasoning. It's non-algebra-based, and the kids like that it's different. They often say, "Wow, that class period went by really fast." They are not looking at the clock, they're busy, they're up, they're moving, they're working together. It is definitely one of the fastest-growing fields. So as an educator of 17 years, I've always been told, "You're getting students ready for jobs that don't exist yet." And this class does that. These jobs did not exist five years ago. Students who have taken this class have been prepared for things that are brand-new at the college level and have been able to major in those, or even double-major, minor in those. So as students are working, not only are they learning the math, they are learning those soft skills that employers are looking for. Students are constantly looking at how they're communicating with each other, they are looking at, can they accurately analyze data and communicate that to someone else? So they are writing, they are verbally communicating all of their findings. They're also learning how to be curious and question different situations and different techniques for collecting data within the computer programming that they're doing. So it's a really exciting program that our students have this opportunity to do. So thank you for listening to our presentation.
Do you have questions?
Yeah. Is anybody having questions?
Everyone was there.
Yes. I do. So what you're talking about, is this required by the state?
No, it's not required by the state. It is an alternative to Algebra II as a pathway to graduation, but it is not required.
So it sounds like you're talking about giving kids more on-ramps to connect with math to see how it works for them?
Yes.
So this is over and above what the state requires?
Correct.
Thank you.
Did I hear you say that the data that they're analyzing is of teen interest? Did I hear that right? Okay. Can you give some examples?
Sure. So we start the year by students collecting data on the snacks that they eat every day. And so we look at nutrition, not in the sense that our food science classes do, but we talk about those choices. So as they collect their data, it's called participatory sensing, so they have a trigger, that trigger is them eating a snack, and then they have to think about the questions that they are answering for that. So why are they eating the snack? What are they eating? They collect some basic data off of the package, the calories, the sodium, things like that. And then they analyze. So they look at things such as, do I usually eat salty or sweet snacks? Do I tend to eat certain types of snacks at certain types of days, or certain times of the day? Students break this down into all different areas, and when we use that data for the first couple months of school to kind of give us a grounding, some of the other things they collect data on, we do personality colors. So they take a basic personality test, they look at personality colors, they look at the basic characteristics of those, and they try to determine if your personality color is then impacting some of your choices. We look at stress data and chill data, so how stressed are you at different times of the day? And then they relate that back. So do certain personalities tend to have certain stress levels in different situations depending on where they are or who they're with?
So like a lot of mindfulness and self-reflection built into a math class? Very cool.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
And I do want to congratulate and commend the three teachers here and teachers from across the district, because it is a lot of work to create new courses and get it off the ground, and again, it just shows your level of commitment to provide experiences and opportunities for our students, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Our next presentation is the Berlin High School Athletic Boosters regarding a proposed indoor baseball and softball facility.
Good evening. Thank you. I'd like to start by thanking you for taking time to meet with us this evening. This is, this proposal is Owentangie Berlin Boosters. My name is Mike Weaver, I'm the head baseball coach at Owentangie Berlin. I'd like to apologize, Mr. Aaron Tompkins, who was our booster president, had a last-minute emergency and couldn't make it, so I'm here alone. But excited, excited about talking to you about our Athletic Boosters proposal for our indoor baseball and softball facility. Our facility, the proposed budget cost is around $312,094. $94.91. We have received an approval from First Commonwealth Bank for a loan for $360,000. It is over six years at an 8% interest rate. That is not locked in. Actually, when we first talked to them, it was nine, and it's going down, and they're thinking and hoping that by the time that we actually use it, which won't be until May, June, that we don't have to pay on it until we actually use it, that will be down even more by then. The facility will be used by Owentangie Berlin baseball, Owentangie Berlin softball, and then local travel teams and community teams as well. So it's not just a school facility, but it's also a facility that will be used by the community and the youth in the community. So the total cost, the steel building, it's a steel building, 72 by 96 feet. The foundation and the concrete slabs is $237,000. The turf, it'll be turfed with concrete, netting and supplies, electricity, and HVAC for the winter, which is where it will be used the most, which is why we're not going to start construction on it until the summer. There's no reason for us to start it now because it's an indoor facility, so baseball's played outside. And so we will start that process in the summer. But just to give you an idea, and it gives us a little bit of wiggle room, obviously, for costs as they may increase from now until then, but those are estimates that we've gotten from our construction companies. So our contractor bids, we'll be using Champion Buildings, and they will, they're the steel manufacturing company that will be building the steel building. Zinsmeister Construction, who is a local company, is an Owentangie grad, they will be doing all the concrete work and the slabs for the steel building. And there's the quotes that we got from them. We also got a couple other different quotes from some larger companies that were probably twice as much as this one. And then we had moved to another local builder that was close to $300,000, and so we're comfortable with the companies that we're using at the price, especially with the loan that we're getting. There's just the quote, that's the look of the building, 72 by 96. It will have two of those large doors that will open up for airways in the summer. It will be on the west side of our maintenance shed, that's currently at Berlin, in between the maintenance shed and the practice soccer fields. We have done the measurements out there, and there's plenty of room for the building. That's just that. And then here's how we're going to pay the loan off. And so it's a six-year repayment, and as you can see, the loan amount is $360,000, and that's with the 8%. So with our outside facility rentals, that's going to cover $60,000 a year. We do have some agreements with some local travel teams that have agreed to help out with a majority of the loan, and then we would be responsible, along with some help, you know, from softball, as far as fundraising. As you can see, that first year, $30,000, and then incrementally less, that we'll be responsible for at the end of those six years, and as far as interest in all of that is concerned. We will be using that with our fundraising. Currently, we do a variety of fundraisers. We do the Super Bowl sub-sales, we do mulch fundraising, we host probably three youth camps throughout the year, we have a golf outing fundraiser, and then we use our two fields in the summer for tournament rentals. That earns us more, way more than that $30,000, and so we're comfortable with our end on that. And so that's how we'll pay the loan back. Questions?
When you say "we", that means you, not us.
Correct. Yes, the boosters.
Right. So if someone disappears to Jamaica and the project, that's not us?
That's correct. That is all taken on by our boosters.
We have no liability.
Correct.
And your, this facility will be subject to the policy that we just passed last year for facility usage and talks about a tiered system?
Correct.
And that's a big deal, because if you don't go to these things, you don't realize how they're always scheduled.
Correct.
And this is, my 12, our 12-year-old uses a facility at Liberty, I mean, and it's always used, so thank you for, thank you for doing this.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah. And the only question I have on that is, do you expect those fundraising numbers to rise even over time? I mean, I know you say you've got some commitments now, but just knowing how busy some of that stuff is?
Yes, I do. And even with talk of, I feel like our fundraising is always more successful when we can actually give people visuals of what the money's being used for, and since we have started to talk about the indoor facility, we've gotten a lot more excitement and involvement with our parents and the community, because they see that, what we're doing with that money. And then we're also putting it back in to our playing fields as well, in those facilities, so people see that.
So when you say tier, did you mean who gets priority to use the facility?
So what we approved last year was a four-tiered system, and it starts with, starts with district folks first, then it works its way all the way, and feel free to interrupt me, because I'm, we're like two or three for where my daughter's at, I think, because our local travel teams have a higher priority than someone from Canada.
Correct.
So, yeah.
So it's us and softball first. And softball, we both use the aux gym right now, so that's also, you know, something that we use, but if there were ever a situation where the aux gym wasn't available, and let's say a travel team had it scheduled, but softball needed it, softball gets it, or we get it, no matter what the contract says.
Because our people are higher on the tier.
Correct.
Did I say that right, tiered? Is that right?
And we don't specifically list Canada, like we love it. It's like, run out.
Right. But the goal of it, the goal of it was for, to help with our Berlin baseball and softball programs, but also for our local district programs, youth programs.
Great.
Thanks, Coach.
Okay. Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Nice haircut, by the way. Appreciate it. Yeah. All right. Next up is summer programming. Vince?
Yep. We have a whole crew, but I'm going to kick things off here, so.
... groups that are paying to use it.
Okay. Okay. Great. Well, good evening, everyone. My name's Vince D'Attilio, know most of you, obviously, but I'm the Director of Curriculum, and I have been tasked with kicking off tonight's team presentation about summer programming, and it's something we do every year, and we're excited to share kind of what we have going on this year and already planning for the summer, obviously. So to get started, just, you know, our shared commitment to facilitating maximum learning for every student, it isn't just the mission statement, you know, it drives the decisions we make, the initiatives that we put forth, and the opportunities we provide to students. And I'm excited about this presentation because I think it shows that, you know, we're dedicated to ensuring that students continue to grow, explore, and excel beyond the traditional academic year, and I think that's, that's an important thing that we offer our students. So this presentation, it will discuss a variety of opportunities that we have crafted to help students, help them facilitate their own maximum learning and help us do that for them. So I will start with summer school, and before I get started, I do want to acknowledge that although I help out with summer school, I am not the boots-on-the-ground for that one. Karen Sedoti, who is the Principal of Owentangie Academy, and Jen Alward, who's the Principal of Oasis, they are our summer school administrators, and I would say they put in much more of that effort into this, so I want to acknowledge them and all the staff who help us out with that in the summer. So when it comes to summer school, obviously, you know, the purpose is to meet the summer learning needs of Owentangie students, but that means different things to different students. So we have kind of three buckets that students fall into in summer school. The first one, you know, is students who are looking to advance themselves in the curriculum, and that is, that is a, that's a significant chunk of folks. We also have students who just want to free up space in their schedule throughout the year, because there's a lot of reasons why you might do that, but that's what we hear from students, is, you know, their schedule is so packed during the school year, sometimes they would like to either take another elective, or take a College Credit Plus class, or have a late start, early, or early arrival, or late arrival, early dismissal. And then third, we do have students who are there catching up, or, you know, trying to retake a class, or something like that. So those are really the three aspects of summer school. The dates are June 3rd through July 12th. All of these courses are virtual. There's two different types of virtual courses that we offer. One is through Apex, which is an online learning system. We offer a wide variety of courses through Apex, Algebra I, Geometry, Intro to Algebra II, Precalc, Economics, Personal Finance is a new one that we've added just because of the new graduation requirement around personal finance, Earth and Space, World History, Government, US History. Those courses are all through that Apex system. They're monitored by our staff here, who are certified teachers in the district. And then the other piece of summer school is our Owentangie-created Schoology courses, which, there are not a lot of these, but these are unique because these are not only taught by our teachers, they're designed by our teachers. And I would argue that they're very strong online experiences. The teachers have went through training and professional learning on how to design an online course, and they're very, very popular. Our college, our English courses, our ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade are all very popular, and then also our PE and health option is also very popular. Those actually, the Schoology courses make up a significant amount of the overall enrollment. Last summer, we had 614 students in summer school. That number was down by about 50 or 60 students from the previous year. I don't know exactly why that is, but I do think College Credit Plus plays a role in that. I've talked a little bit about that at other presentations. Those numbers are on the rise, and I think some of those students who are looking to advance or free up their time and their schedule are just headed to a local university to do that. So we'll keep an eye on that and see how, you know, summer school looks over the next few years, but I would assume that this year we'd be around that number also. Just the other thing I was going to mention about summer school is that there is a cost for the community to summer school. It's $210 per course, and it's, that's maintained the last few years, it's been the same cost. So I'll save questions for the end, but I'm going to pass it over to Erica, who's going to help us look at our C program.
So my name is Erica Boone, I'm the Curriculum Supervisor for Gifted, and our summer enrichment experience, really its purpose is to provide enrichment opportunities for students, but I also think it's a great opportunity for teachers to share a little bit of their passions, and this student interest and teacher passions kind of come together for eight days, the first two weeks of June, so June 3rd through the 13th. We alternate locations each year. Last year, we were at Hyatt's and Liberty Tree, this year, we're back at Glen Oak and Orange Middle School. Unlike summer school numbers, C numbers are increasing and seem to increase a little bit more each year. So last year, we had around 1,161 unique enrollments. It's not necessarily unique students, but unique registrations, because students can, families can sign up for an AM session and a PM session, so some students are there all day long with the sack lunch that they bring. We tend to have about 40 courses, and teachers that teach those courses, sometimes it fluctuates a little bit. Each year, we get new proposals, because these are courses that are designed by our teachers, and teachers that come and teachers that come back year after year continue to refine their, the courses that they've proposed or taken on. So I think personally, maybe I'm biased, but it's a really good program for summer for two weeks. We also have two administrative liaisons that we hire this year. Kimberly Vedder, math specialist at YN.Run is back with us for a second year as this admin liaison. And then Linda Crandall, a social studies teacher, a teacher in the social studies department at Orange High School, has graciously agreed to take on this adventure with us. So I haven't had, like this, having been in this position with summer enrichment experience in the last three years, I really think that it's a great place for students to just dig into things that they're interested in, that they don't get an opportunity maybe to explore in the same way during the school year. So with that, I will turn it over to Marty.
Good evening. I'm Marty Argonbright from People Services. We had so much fun last board meeting, we decided to come back. And with us tonight are our four Assistant Directors. Eric Gully will share a little bit with our summer program for our English learners. Jaclyn Roscoe will talk about our preschool summer program. Stephanie Dabrick will talk about our extended school year program and Malika Jefferson will talk about our summer intervention academy. Just a quick stat to share with you, you know, as we're reviewing this information, we bring in over 200 staff members to work with nearly 1,000 students in our People Services summer program. So we do a lot of great things to help a lot of, you know, support our students, so we're proud of the work we do. With that, I'll turn it over to Eric.
Hi, everyone. Happy to be here again, like Marty said, and excited to share information with you about our English learner summer program. You can see the stats on the slides here as far as the location, student-staff, but I'd really like to share with you why this program is a win-win. So first, our newest students get 33 hours of additional instruction in a highly supportive environment. Second, this program provides our staff members enrolled in Audubon's T-SL endorsement courses the opportunity to earn their practicum hours while learning from our veteran EL specialists. And finally, as a supplemental program, all the costs are covered, all the costs are covered through Title III federal funds. Any questions about the EL summer program? Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, and I'm going to talk to you about our extended school year program. Like Eric said, you can, you can kind of read the stats on the screen in terms of dates and locations and numbers of students and teachers. And while you kind of review that information, I just want to share with you why we do this and how students qualify. So every student on an IEP, this is part of the team conversation for each student every school year. There's an annual review meeting that's required, so this conversation happens for every single student on an IEP. That number there, that 500, it's about 15% or so of our IEP population, so it is a small subgroup. More of our needier students in terms of either the significance of their disability or the, what we, what we look at in terms of data to make these decisions are quarterly progress reports. We write goals for students that are evaluated quarterly and the teams are looking at the data to determine. The law speaks about regression or significant loss of skill due to a break in instruction. So if the data is showing us from the end of one school year in May to when a student returns in August and then at the end of the first quarter in October, if they have not either, you know, maintained skill or kind of recouped is the word that the law uses to gain back that skill, they are potentially a candidate for summer instruction. So that's why it's that small kind of subgroup of students. Okay?
So Stephanie just spoke about the ways that we determine whether students are, qualify for CEA. So that goes the same way for our CEA program. Our CEA program is designed for our students that are currently in our specialized learning centers, we call SLCs. So those students that qualify for ESY, you can see the stats on the screen there. We do have new locations this year for our CEA program, so that'll be Liberty Tree and Hyatt. Our team has been working really diligently and they're so excited about the program this summer. Their theme for the summer is Go Team Go and it's going to surround the Olympics for the summer and there will be lots of activities that focus on academics, math, science, social studies, as well as functional skills. They will be working with peer mentors in this program, so any student that helps out in our CEA program will also be earning graduation hours towards graduation.
Thank you for having us back. Jaclyn Roscoe with preschool. Just like my counterparts, specifically Stephanie and Malika, our students in preschool qualify also through a data-driven decision-making that happens at their annual IEP meeting. So the stats that I gave you were from last summer. We are restructuring our preschool to mirror, similar to CEA, is that we anticipate the majority of the students that do qualify, which is also, like school age, a small percentage of our IEP students, that they most likely are students that are currently in our preschool specialized learning centers. With that being said, we're mimicking that staffing. Our staffing will directly tie to those decisions that are typically made by spring break. Each of the students will specifically work on those identified IEP goals and objectives where they did qualify based off regression and recruitment. So that concludes our presentation along with curriculum. Are there any questions about Owletangie's summer services?
So some of them are required by student IEPs and some of them, are all of these required or what, because we talked about a lot of programs.
The three programs that Stephanie and Malika and I all spoke to, ESY is Extended School Year Services. That is defined under IDEA and that is in Section 4 of the IEP where the team comes together to analyze data from the progress report. So you look at gaps of time, summer being one of those breaks, winter being one of those breaks. Sometimes our students, like recently, we have a preschooler who is out on medical leave and we'll actually look at his returning data. He may show some regression, but how long does it take him to recoup it? And the state defines that as a reasonable amount of time, which we work with our stakeholders to educate our families and staff on that and then they would make a data-driven decision and that's how they would qualify. So CEA, ESY, which is kind of our traditional model, and the preschool ESY are all under that same umbrella of qualifying.
Going back to the beginning, programs, are those required by the state? Do we give kids options for that?
No, no, they're not required by the state for summer school, but we offer that to our students in those areas where we have interest or a need. But that's the other thing I didn't say, that those courses are kind of curated based on what we think kids need in the summer.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just as a parent, I want to say that my kids have done summer enrichment the last few years and they've really enjoyed getting to do something a little bit different in the schools. They've done, my older daughter has done like digital creation and coding for Minecraft, which she and her friends loved. My younger daughter did a cooking class last summer that she really enjoyed and was so excited to bring home everything that she had made that day. And really, like as a parent also who has to scramble to look for camps and stuff all summer, this is a really great, cost-effective option for our kids, so I really appreciate that and I love to see that the numbers just keep going up and that the teachers are really excited about offering something different to the kids.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing and thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Mr. Meyer.
This is where I'm standing. All right. Good evening. Before you guys run out here, thank you again. All right, so we're gonna get right into it. Students and stakeholders, this past weekend held our 10th Annual One Community Conference at Orange High School. The theme for this year's event was Equity in the Arts, consisted of 13 workshops with four led by student groups. And really, I talked about this at the last board meeting, but really want to highlight the students and the tremendous talent that we have within the district and obviously that was showcased on Saturday. So a great job by the ENI team to put that event together. Also, want to thank Dr. Dabrick and Ms. Dabrick for representing the board during the event on Saturday, so again, thank you for that. Wanted to highlight because again, at the last board meeting, we saw a performance from the Advanced Treble Ensemble from Berlin High School, so as they stated, they performed at the Music Educators Association Professional Development Conference and again, high honor, one of only two high school choirs selected to perform this year. This, this is pretty cool, so I wanted to highlight this. So earlier in the school year, Indian Springs, as well as many of our schools, hold Veterans Day events. So during their Veteran Day event, they met Sergeant Nims, who turned 100 this year. So they wanted to invite him back, so they did invite him back. Mrs. Petrelli's class invited him back to celebrate alongside the 100 Days of School Celebration, his 100-year birthday. So obviously, they did some activities with student performances, songs and a cake there for Sergeant Nims. And on another note, Mr. Lester's grandmother this past weekend turned 100. So Mrs. Vu's class created birthday cards for Mr. Lester's son to take to their grandmother or their great-grandmother, your grandmother, to present this past weekend. So again, just, again, just really thoughtful experiences for our students and for sure, our teachers provide those opportunities for our kids.
Which I just want to call Mrs. Vu because we just told her the day before that we were leaving and that's why we were gone. She took it upon herself to tell all the kids to create this. She made it into a book and then wrote a really nice card and sent it along and my grandmother, their great-grandmother was thrilled, but it just goes, shows, I mean, we as parents didn't even reach out, it was just my son that mentioned it to her. It just shows how our teachers are going above and beyond every day. It was really, really cool.
Absolutely. Also want to congratulate Owletangie High School Mock Trial Team who competed at Delaware County Courthouse last month and won both cases, received Best Attorney and Witness Awards and they will advance to the regional competition here coming up February 16th. Also, want to recognize the sophomore STEM students from Owletangie Academy. Again, working in STEM through robotics and then working with Walnut Creek Elementary students. So again, high school students with elementary school students and again, just great collaboration from the learning that our high school students do at the STEM Academy and then obviously able to go over to an elementary and share that with our elementary students. Also want to highlight this, so this is a district spotlight through the ESC of Owletangie Schools and their recent EL education newsletter, but want to highlight the Seal of Bilingual Scholarship. So again, in collaboration with OEF, the district and OEF have created a scholarship and this is a new scholarship and the only one in the state so far, so that's again, a great collaborative effort, which then will provide opportunities for students to apply for a scholarship here in the spring. Also, this is, I want to highlight Mrs. Freese, Chief Human Resources Officer. She presented at the Ohio Association of Elementary School Administrators and Secondary School Administrators this past, it was about a week ago. And her presentation was navigating the HR world, but more importantly, talked about recruitment of staff members and then once they're here, how to retain staff members and how as an organization, we value people. So this was very, very well received. And again, it's just another thing that we do as Owletangie. We have a strong brand, so attracting staff members, we do a good job with, but obviously retaining is equally important with staff members. And when we are able to go out into the community, this was a focus on women's leadership and women in leadership roles in education, so that's important to us as an organization, but for sure in the education space is extremely important. So, you know, it's a, it's a good recruiting tool for Owletangie as well as we're out talking to, these were all administrators from across the state.
If I may, I actually, I knew many people in attendance and my phone was blowing up that day with a lot of positive comments about that. She, her message was very well received, so it was great to get that feedback the day of, that people, I wish I would have taken myself that I wasn't there, so it was great.
Absolutely. All right, so continuing on with our theme, March ballot issue, know the facts, I have a couple frequently asked questions that I want to go over. So first question, if the ballot passes, does that mean more redistricting processes? So again, we want to be clear, if the ballot passes, then redistricting will occur as buildings open. So that's common practice for us in Owletangie. As buildings open, we do go through redistricting process as we open buildings. If the ballot does not pass, redistricting processes may take place more often to balance enrollment. So again, our challenge is increased enrollment, so we have to continually, continually look at our enrollment to balance enrollments across our schools. So if it doesn't pass, then we're gonna, we may look at that more frequently in order to balance our enrollments. And specifically, want to mention Berlin High School. So Berlin High School is projected to have more than 2,200 students by 27, 28 and that's the projected year with successful passage that we would open the high school. If doing nothing, Berlin High School will grow to between 3,500 to 3,600 students by 2032, 33. So again, being responsible as far as the need for a fifth high school to accommodate the growth, but if it doesn't pass at the high school for sure, again, we would be looking at multiple redistrictings year over year to balance our four high schools. Another commonly asked question, why don't we just split the school district since it is getting so big? So we've been asked that, Mr. Jenkins and I, across some of our conversations, whether they're in homes or at schools. And really, the question back is, why would we want to split the great district that we've created here? And you can see some things up there, obviously some unintended consequences for trying to attempt to create new school districts within our existing attendance boundaries. So splitting the Board of Education elected by constituents from our 95 square miles, so how does that take place? Again, if you have multiple districts, you need two superintendents, two treasurers and additional administrators for administrative functions within splitting the district. The second bullet is a big one, splitting the property tax base with the commercial tax base being inequitably distributed in certain areas over other areas, then how do you split that? So obviously, some areas would have greater commercial tax base than others, so on the other side of that, we would see, or some people would see, greater residential tax burden in those areas. Splitting the revenue streams, we have passed levies, so how does that work? Splitting the debt of the school district currently, that the school district currently has for its facilities, splitting the workforce with employees having to change employers. So you can see, all of these things obviously would be a huge challenge for the district and at the end of the day, we don't feel that it would be prudent to split the school district.
So even after doing all of that, would we, we still wouldn't save money?
Oh, correct.
Because you'd have to buy duplicate of all these folks that presented to us, your new district has to have all those in the new district as well.
Yeah, so we would have to answer all those questions, but absolutely. And again, there is something to be said for economies of scale of the larger district. So again, as Mr.
Splitting it up with de-scaling.
Pardon me?
Splitting it up with de-scaling. So you have rising cost per pupil, additional need for additional levies because you're losing scale.
Yeah.
It's just bad math.
And we're still growing, so no matter where you are in the district.
Right.
So as, you know, Mr. Lester said, again, we are proud of the low cost per pupil and for sure, the product that we continue to produce added an exceptional value.
Well, and just to the point that you made a second ago, you'd have to do all of those things if you want to provide the same services that this district is able to provide, or you have to decide to cut services, right? And that's a decision that a lot of smaller school districts have to face, is can we actually afford... school districts have to face, is can we actually afford to provide the sorts of services that this district is able to provide because of the, the scale of it?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And then another question I'll pose, even if we all said, no, I think we should still go that route, we should split it, and we made this decision, you thought it was a great idea and the board said it was, the state still has involvement in this, and they're kind of in the practice of consolidating, not creating more districts, correct?
Yes. So it's a complex process through the Ohio Department of Education and ultimately the General Assembly.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So superintendent action items, pretty straightforward. From my action items tonight, we have certified staff action items, classified staff action items, approve, again, some seniors early graduation, for early graduation, a few student overnight and out-of-state trips, and one business management facility item to recommend approval for the shared-use pathway along home road adjacent to Indian Springs and Liberty High School in the amount of $115,000 that will continue that, that path to the library going north. Important dates coming up, Classified Interview Day tomorrow, that would be Wednesday, February 7th, Our Professional Development Day, 3rd of the year, February, Friday, February 16th, No School Presence Day on Monday, the 19th, Our Annual State of the Schools, so State of the Schools 2024 will be Wednesday, February 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at Owlin Tangi High School. And then our next board meeting will be right here, February 22nd, at 6:30 PM.
Any other questions?
No.
All right. Thanks. All right. Mr. Jenkins, Treasurer's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Thank you, Mr. Lester. Board of Education, good evening. I have a few things to update before I get into the action items. The one is the PAFR, or Popular Annual Financial Report, should be landing in mailboxes later this week. This is again, something that we do to transparently and openly show what we do as a district with the vital resources that we get from our community. So everything in the report, from revenue to expenses to our debt service, it really tries to cover the whole gamut of what happens each fiscal year. This would be for the fiscal year 22, 23, obviously, which is the fiscal year that ended on June 30th of 2023. I also will continue with the flavor of know the facts. And I have a couple of issues that we've been asked that really are pretty interesting questions. And the one we hear quite frequently is, why does Owlin Tangi need to pass levies when we continue to have new growth and development in the district? So I want to be clear that these are general fund increases, tax year 23 over tax year 22. Tax years are calendar years, and so it was easier to look at it that way. What the graph shows, and you have a blue bar and an orange bar in 2022, that represent respectively, our tax revenue for the general fund for inside mills, and then the orange bar would be all of our voted levies. And that just shows how much is brought in with each revenue stream. Remember, the inside mills are frozen, they don't change, they don't move, but the voted levies are adjusted every year so that on existing property, it does not increase. And that's why when you look at 2023, those same two revenue streams, the blue bar represents inside mills. The blue bar is bigger. The blue bar will be bigger because remember, inside mills do not change, because inside mills do not change and values are up in general, 34%. We have increased revenue from inside mills, and that is accounted for, and that is always put in our five-year forecast. But the much, much larger revenue stream would be our voted levies. And in 2023, House Bill 920 will take existing properties, and it will make sure that we continue to get $179,053,689. The final thing you see are the two little bars, which is the forecast that we carry for all of the new residential property that comes online during the calendar year. There's a little sliver, and I know it's hard to see because of scale, but we get about $1 million when you apply inside mills to all that new valuation. And then all the voted levies also get applied to those new properties that came on the duplicate, January 1 of 2023. And those amount to just a shade under $6 million. If you put the delta from 23 to 22 between the inside mills, which is the blue bars, and you add in aggregate the new property, it's somewhere on the order of about $13.7 million that we do absolutely carry in the forecast as new revenue that comes into the general fund year over year as valuations increase, either by reappraisal or new property.
Is it, it's also fair to assume that not all of the new students that come here end up in new construction, right? Because some of the new students and some of the growth is someone adding a student to an existing property.
That's correct.
Right? And so there's no new growth on those. It's only new growth for new construction.
That's correct. And the model we use, we use assumptions and we know historically what comes on each year as brand-new property. In 2023, we had a higher year because there was a full reappraisal. And it makes sense that as the auditor sent folks out to take a look, there had to be situations where they came across property maybe that hadn't been picked up on the duplicate. So what that represents in that new property, and it was a reasonably substantial year, it's about double what it normally is. About $181 million worth of assessed value came on the duplicate. Now, that's assessed value, so roughly multiply that by three to get the market value. So somewhere around $480 to $500 million in market value. So all of that is accounted for, and this isn't the value, this is the new revenue. Okay? So 13.7 million. If you look though, at just our changes in salaries, because we are such a rapidly growing district, the bar that represents 2024 is broken down into all of our various salary groupings. So for example, the blue at the bottom would be all other salaries, think supplementals, you know, think things of substitutes and that sort of thing. Then you have the orange, which is certified admin. You have the green, which is certified regular salaries or teachers. And then ultimately, you have the red, which is classified. If, this is just the delta from fiscal 23 to 24. The sum of those bars is just a shade under $20 million, just for salary increases alone. Now, I don't bring that up in any way, shape, or form, other than to show that when we have a year where we open Berlin Middle School, and we're adding somewhere between 80 and 90 staff members across the district, because as we go, and basically with the pace we're on, a middle school this year, we're forecasting, obviously depending on how the ballot issue goes, two elementary schools in 2025, a elementary school in 2024, we're picking up in the average year, 55, 60, sometimes as high as 90, new staff members. So I agree that if we go back a slide, that, you know, $13 million of increased property taxes is certainly not something, you know, that any of us would look at a number like $13 million and say that it's small, but proportionately, $13 million on a $350 million budget, it gets overwhelmed. So we brought these up to show that as we continue to be diligent with what we spend per pupil, we're growing. And we have to factor in that growth. We also have to factor in obviously reasonable increases in salaries based on negotiated raises, also based on steps. All of that is in the recipe, and it, the change in value and the taxes that it drives just simply aren't able to keep up. And that's in any school I've ever been in. We're no different than any other district I've ever served in. You just get a little bit of inside mills and then new property as it, as it comes online. Questions about what we're trying to show with these two things?
So with all of this, last year to this year, we're still spending less per pupil?
The 2023 CUP report, we were up just slightly. We went to 13,735. The 2022 CUP report was 13,424. But that is a nominal, nominal increase from one year to the next. The other question we've gotten lately is, and on the right is a screenshot of the auditor's tax estimator. And if right now you go to the auditor's tax estimator, there are three lines that are showing. There's the line that we have always continued to talk about, which is the current expense levy. Notice it says additional. It's three mills, and the assumed cost on that is $105. I put $100,000 in the estimator so we could match the rates we've been talking about. The next levy is the permanent improvement levy, which we've talked about repeatedly for the last four to five months. 1.25 mills, $43.75. If you add the first two lines, we're at $148.75, spot on with exactly where we said we would be. Folks are asking, what's going on with that third line? Why is there 2.72 mills there for the bond issue and an assumed cost of around $95? What, what is going on? Why is the district saying it's just 148.75? So I'm going to address that this evening. When we passed the resolution as a Board of Education to put the ballot, or to put the issue on the ballot, the resolution talks about doing three things. It talks about the current expense levy, it talks about the permanent improvement levy. And then with the bond issue, there's two parts to that. The bond issue authorizes, should the issue pass, the district to issue the $350 million worth of debt. It also authorizes the district, should we need to, to collect an additional chunk of millage to be able to pay back the debt service. But that's where the statement, no additional mills, comes in. We understand that the auditor's assumptions on things like the interest rate of what we would sell the debt at, of the maximum maturity, of things like, you know, something that goes into the recipe of estimating those mills is level principal, which no one would ever take a loan out and pay it back as level principal. It, it's just not something that you do. The auditor is bound by certain things when it comes to creating that 2.72-mill estimate. What we're saying when we say no additional mills is that even though the authority is there to collect 2.72 mills to pay debt service, we have already analyzed our debt service thoroughly. We've already made assumptions, very intelligent assumptions, about interest rates, how long we'll issue the debt, the structure of the debt, and we are highly, highly confident that we will not need that 2.72 mills. We're so confident, if this board remembers, we cut our debt service mills by a mill and a quarter from seven and a half to 6.25. So not only are we not going to collect the 2.72 mills that are authorized here, in aggregate, we reduced it. So someone might say, does a district have a track record of this, or is this just some new strategy that's not been tested and isn't proven? And the answer quite clearly is, it's, it's well-established and it has a proven track record. If we go back in time, I pulled the three most recent bond issues. If you start in 2011, there was a $24.4 million bond issue approved by the district. Now, with that issue, we ended up doing some things a few years later with elementary schools. But when that issue was passed, the auditor, just like now, had to estimate a millage. The millage estimated was a half a mill. Nothing additional was added in January of 2012 to the debt service millage. It was done, no additional mills. When we passed the Berlin High School issue at 79.560 million, using the same recipe, the auditor calculated that 1.3 mills was authorized to pay the debt service back on that bond issue. But when we got to January of 17, we did not increase the debt service millage. And finally, in 2020, when we sold 134.7 million, not all at once, we sold it in three tranches, but you get the picture. But that is also part of, by the way, how the strategy works. You don't have to issue all 350 million at once, and we won't. We'll issue it as we need it, as projects are ready to be, to be done. But that 134.7 million bond issue, the auditor estimated an average annual millage of 1.7 mills, and we did not collect any additional mills in 2021. So it's a proven track record. It's something that districts other than Owlin Tangi are also doing. We're in frequent communication with Mr. Kite, Sherry Lewis, at the county auditor's office, and we're very confident. And that is why the rate that we are publishing is the 148.75. When our voters go to the ballot, they will see that same 2.72 mills that is authorized. We want to be sure that they hear us loudly and clearly that this is a no additional millage bond issue, and we are confident and have already talked with the auditor about not needing to collect a single mill of that 2.72 mills. So that that all-in cost is the 148.75 per 100,000. Questions?
Very clear.
So tonight's action items, minutes from January 11th, minutes from January 25th, some donations on the agenda. The 2024 rates and amounts are the millage rates, and CY there means collection year. The tax year is technically 23. It's confusing in school finance, it's a year and a year, so it's collection year 24. Regardless, the collection year millage rates and amounts are on that resolution, and we need to accept them and let the auditor know, who will let the tax commission know that we're good with those amounts. And something to look at, by the way, on those 24 rates, it's 6.25 mills on that resolution. And then these will all be, unless they're something that folks want to pull out and consider individually, approved by a single consent action. Any other questions?
No. I just want to add, I really appreciate both you and Mr. Meyer, just the clarity in which you answer these questions. These are, all of these questions that we've seen today are things that have come up, whether it's at the community conversations, or on social media, or in, in other coffee chats, or other discussions that we've had. And I think what we're trying to do here is model a very high level of transparency about this. So I would encourage people, if you have additional questions about these sorts of things, bring them forward. Let's talk about them. We'll address them here, we'll address them on the levy information page. But this, none of these things are things that we're, we're trying to, you know, not answer. We want to be very clear with the information that we're giving folks, and I appreciate just how clearly you both do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any public participation?
I have none.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. We will then move into the treasurer consent items. We have the approval of the January 11th and 25th minutes, the acceptance of donations, the collection year rates and amounts. Does anyone wish to pull any of those out separately? Okay. I have a motion to approve the consent items.
I'll move. Do so.
All right. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just $30,000 contribution to Owlin Tangi. That's huge.
Yeah.
That's great.
It's awesome.
For yearbooks. For yearbooks.
All right, Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Meyer, superintendent consent items.
Yeah, so I'd like to recommend approval of the following superintendent consent action items, A, specific human resource items for certified staff, B, specific human resource items for classified staff, C, approval of seniors for graduation, and D, approval of student overnight and out-of-town field trips. I'm asking you to approve these items A through D by one single action and vote, unless you'd like to discuss any of these items separately.
So does anyone want to pull any of these out separately? Okay, can I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Jenkins.
A second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Mr. Jenkins.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Jenkins. Any discussion, sorry? All right, Mr. Jenkins.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Jenkins. Any discussion, sorry? All right, Mr. Jenkins.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Jenkins. Any discussion, sorry? All right, Mr. Jenkins.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Jenkins. Any discussion, sorry? All right, Mr. Jenkins.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Jenkins. Any discussion, sorry? All right, Mr. Jenkins.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Jenkins. Any discussion, sorry? All right, Mr. Jenkins.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?